Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the June 15, 2016, meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. Would you join us in a moment of silence, please? We have no changes to the agenda.
Chairman, move for adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. For committee reports, I believe we have one, and that's Mr. Moan for the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The committee met Monday of this week, and we considered, or actually shouldn't say necessarily considered, we had initial presentations of four comprehensive policy plan amendment applications that the planning department received by the June 1 deadline. So it was really a cursory review and a 15,000-foot discussion on the part of the committee. Generally acknowledged that, you know, for three of the applications, they are involving properties that have already been assigned planned land use designations through prior planning efforts and small area plans, and the requests are to adjust the sewer and water service area or UDA boundaries in those cases. And then in each of those, we generally felt that it, and acknowledged that it made sense to consider more detailed analysis through this cycle to determine if the timing was right for the boundaries to be adjusted and the next levels of entitlement to occur. And the fourth application is one that's a little bit outside of, but near the northeast land use plan area, and the committee generally felt that, you know, while there was certainly, you know, it was understood that where the interest was coming from and what the argument was that was being put forward by the property owner, that it really shouldn't be considered as a standalone amendment, but rather involving the broader area. If that particular property were to be brought in, we should look at what's happening around it as well. So all of these will be going forward to the full commission and the board at a joint session in August at some time. And I know staff will provide some additional analysis, more detailed analysis then, as well as the committee's comments. And at that point, there will be a decision about whether, you know, individually or collectively they move forward in the process.
Thank you very much. And also, the public meetings for the comprehensive plan revision, the 2035 comprehensive plan, were finished up last evening, and we encourage all of our citizens to keep abreast of us on the Internet, because there's certainly more to come, and more information we'd like to hear from them. So, thank you for that. We have Kat Eaton from the City of Winchester, welcome again.
Thank you. So I'm going to provide a quick update on our planning commission's work session that occurred June 7. It was in preparation for our June 21 regular meeting. The items that we reviewed, first item entailed an overview led by Tim Humans of the corridor enhancement districts, and the review just kind of went over what exactly are those guidelines. Specifically, they provide guidelines and regulations for building aesthetics and site features, with a note that it does not change the underlying zoning that regulates the land use. That was a really important point to clarify, both for commissioners and also the public. There's been a couple of public hearings, and then the action item to consider in our June 21 meeting will be whether or not it's recommended to move forward to city council. The other items that we looked over were two telecommunications receivers. One was proposed, or is proposed, for Daniel Morgan Middle School. It's a 100-foot monopole with potentially up to four chandeliers. It would primarily be on the side of Sensony, just past 81, on the corner of the school above the athletic field. The other is over at the fire station at Friendship Park. It's the old staircase that's used for training, and it would be, I believe it was a 20 or 25-foot extension at the top of that staircase. And then the other telecommunications item was to add the use of telecommunications for a property over on Jubilee, which was 501 West Jubilee. And so those things will be considered in the June 21 regular meeting that we have coming soon.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our representative from the Board of Supervisors is out of town at the moment, but he wanted me to tell you that he had no report because the board didn't meet, so all that came out even for him. So, I think we'll conclude our reports, and now is the time on our agenda for citizen comments. If any of you want to speak with us about anything other than the public hearings, please come forward and do so. Anyone? So, we will just let that, we will close the citizen comment portion. Our first item is a public hearing item. It's a conditional use permit 03-16 for Verizon Wireless Commercial Telecommunications Facility, submitted to construct a wireless telecommunications consisting of 150-foot monopole with capacity for at least three carriers, the applicant included, and 50-by-50-foot equipment compound base. The property is located at Grace Brethren Church at 143 Greenwood Road, and is identified with property identification number 55-A79 in the Red Bud Magisterial District. Mr. Sharon.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. Again, this is for a telecommunications tower to be located at the 143 Greenwood Road. The property is currently zoned RA, rural areas, and the surrounding properties are RP, with the exception of property in north, which is B2. The other properties southeast and west would be residential performance, or RP. The B2 used property, if you're all familiar with, and I'll show you on the map here in a second, Route 7 is where the old Chantel Honda is. That's the B2 property that's adjoining this proposed use. The rest of the properties, again, are RP residential. If I could turn your attention to the, your map on the, to the left of you, there's the outline of the property, you see, that's where the church is. This map, of course, is aerial, but I'm gonna, I got a third map in here. It kind of shows you where the location, I'll blow it up there if you can see the approximate area of that small yellow dot. That's where this proposed telecommunications tower is going to be located. The Frederick County zoning ordinance allows for telecommunications facilities in RA rural area zoning districts with an approved conditional use permit. This proposed 150-foot monotype commercial telecommunications facility is going to be located on 22 acres of property, again, it's zoned RA, which is the, is currently being used as a church. The property is located in urban development area, or UDA, and it's also located within our SWAS, or which is the sewer water service areas, you're well aware of, and it's identified in our comprehensive policy plan. It's also located within the Sensony Road Eastern Frederick Land Area Plan. The prop, the, these plans identify this area to remain, of course, residential in character. However, this proposed site is located within the vicinity of the third battlefield of the Winchester area, Battle. In your agenda that you got, there's also, it went through the HRB with a, with their comments. So it did make through the HRB because it's located in one of our battlefield areas. The applicant is requesting also a reduced setback requirement as set forth in the Frederick County zoning ordinance. Should this waiver be granted, a 65-foot setback reduction would be granted. At your dais, there's a letter from the engineer, which did not get in your agenda, and I will apologize for that. Basically, with the engineer is requesting, I should say, the applicant's requesting for reduction of setback requirements as required in the ordinance, and that it would, that the fall, if you had what we call crumple zone around that, he has certified that would be fine, that it would work with the setback. Also, just for, you know, for note, for the record, as you're all aware, one of the conditions we come up, we're going to have a site plan. That's also going to have to be included during site plan application package. Staff will review and certify that it will, that it can fall within that, in that area, and be contained. So I just want to, again, apologize, because the letter did not get in your agenda when it was sent out. So with that, should the planning commission find this used to be appropriate, staff will recommend the following conditions be assigned to this commercial telecommunications facility. Number one, all review agency comments shall be complied with at all times. Number two, the tower should be available for co-locating or personal wireless service providers. Number three, a minor site plan shall be approved by Frederick County. Number four, the tower should be removed by the applicant and/or property owner within 12 months of abandonment of operation. Number five, in event the telecommunications tower is non-erected within 12 months, this approval of the conditional use permit would be deemed invalid. Number six, an expansion or modification, this usual require new conditional use permit. And also, in addition to that, Madam Chair, the planning commission, if the planning commission find this waiver from the required setback acceptable, a motion to recommend approval of the setback reduction to 65 feet to allow for, to allow a tower to be 100 feet from identified property, properties would be appropriate. So you could include that in with our conditions. With that, Madam Chair, we do have representatives of these telecommunications facility here to answer any questions you or any planning commissioners may have, and staff will be available also. Thank you.
Any questions with Mr. Sharon at the moment? Would the representatives like to speak with us, please?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Ed Donahue, representing the applicant. I brought with me the RF engineer, and also Mr. Cabot Goudy, who signed the letter, reflecting the, as Mark says, the crumple zone, in case there are any questions. Amit Mahajan is prepared to discuss and go over the propagation maps, if you'd like to talk about the coverage objective of the site, but he has submitted those maps, he prepared those maps, and those are submitted with your application. This is of critical need for Verizon Wireless, but it is also a co-location site, and we have interest from Chantel, who's expressed a keen desire to co-locate on the property. In my experience, the other carriers will follow. It is designed to co-locate and allow for three telecommunications providers. I want to thank Mr. Sharon for an excellent staff review. As is often the case when we have a good staff review, there's very little for the applicant to say, but I can certainly answer any questions, or I can have one of the two gentlemen with me provide any of the details you'd like to hear.
Thank you. Commission, yes, Mr. Moan.
Just have one question, and this is based on some inquiries that I received, and there's a concern, and I think I know the answer, but I'd prefer, obviously, to hear it from you for the record. You know, obviously, this is a facility, it'll be relatively close to existing residential areas, and there has been some concern about whether or not the signals emitted from the tower would interfere at all with, you know, typical household electronics, obviously not the electronics that would depend on, you know, the tower, but other things. And so, I just wanted to get clarification from you about any impact, if any, that it might have.
Yeah, the, they can't interfere under their, under the penalty of their FCC license, is the short answer.
Okay.
But different spectrum, and obviously being at a height much greater than, for example, garage door openers, other types of things. But they are, under penalty of severe penalty, financial penalties, or potentially losing their license with the FCC should interference occur, and there's recourse to the FCC if anything untoward happens, but that's, that's the answer on that one.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have, yes, Mr. Oats?
Part of getting the conditional use permit is to look for other structures in the area that could accommodate it. Right across Route 7, there's the high school with stadium lights. Did you contact the schools about locating there?
So there was discussions with the schools in the 2013 timeframe. There were actually three different locations on the property where the schools had said, maybe this would work, maybe it wouldn't work, and in the, I want to say, first quarter, but in any event of 2014, schools got back to the site acquisition person at that time and said, this is not the mission of the schools, we're not interested. So at that time, we stopped the discussions with the high school and began looking for other things. Before that, we looked for opportunities to co-locate, for example, on water tanks, transmission towers, things of that kind. Finding nothing, we were looking for raw land site, but as you say, the school was, was one of the ones considered.
So the school turned you down?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this conditional use permit? Yes, if you come forward, please, and give us your name and magisterial district.
My name's Annika Taverner. I live at 103 Battlefield Drive, and that is in an area where I'm going to be able to view this tower directly. And, you know, when we purchased the property, it actually has a very beautiful skyline, and I'm very concerned about how this is going to affect the value of our property. It's a 150-foot monopole. I've looked on the Internet a couple of times. It's not beautiful at all, and I understand that there's a price that comes with development. However, I feel like I wanted to, I wanted to say that at least. And then I have a question about the setback waiver. Can someone explain a setback waiver to me?
Yes, we'll have Mr. Sharon do that for us.
Sure. Okay. Do you have anything?
I'm James Taverner, also located at 103 Battlefield. My question is also about the setback waiver as to, we saw the map where the tower is supposed to be located. It appears to be right behind the building that used to house a motorcycle dealership. And I just want to be certain that if that's the place where it's determined that it's going to be, that that's the place it's going to end up. I don't want it to end up basically in my backyard, is my concern. So, there's my questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? I'm sorry.
Could I add in that I'd like to see a picture of the actual tower? Since the monopoles are different on the Internet, it would be good to see what, what the tower's actually going to look like, since I will be viewing it from my back window the rest of my life.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak to us regarding this cell tower? Well, then, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Shall we deal with the issues that the heaveners have asked for?
If you look to your screen to your left, this is what, and also for general, for some of the comments, the proposed telecommunications tower is required to be setback from a property line of 165 foot. Tower, you go from one for one, as you know, in our ordinance, so the tower is 150-foot. The RA zoning district, the max height is 35. So the normal setback in an RA zoning district is 50 for the ordinance. So, again, one foot goes over the district height of 35, it's 115 feet higher than what's allowed in the district, as you see by the equation. The site plan notes the tower to be 100 feet from the property line, so these setbacks can be made, and that's where your 65 comes from. I also have the engineer who's here who sent the letter in your package. It also shows the, where the, it's a, it's not an official site plan, I don't like to say that, but it shows like a, a list of where they're going to plan to set this on that northern part that I showed on the pic, the photograph, and I could show you that if you need to see that again. Again, the applicant's engineer is here to answer any questions you may have on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the engineer want to discuss this with us? And also, I'm not sure if we have a picture of an actual one, but if you'll come forward, sir, please, and give us your name.
Yes. My name is Cabot Goudy. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Virginia, and I believe the question was with regard to how we arrived at this setback. And again, as Mark had described, the normal height restriction here is 35 feet, and anything above 35 feet then requires a one-to-one setback. This pole being 150 feet, that would require an additional 115 feet beyond the 35. So if we add 115 and 35, we get to 165. This pole is intended to be setback 100 feet, and that is therefore where the 65 feet comes from. So we're requesting a reduction of 65 feet from what would normally be required by the ordinance.
Yes, sir. Second part, I think, was also where specifically would the tower be on the site? And this was to confirm for the, for the heaveners.
Do we have a slide that shows the site plan?
No, actually don't.
Perhaps, Madam Chairman, if I may? Madam Chairman?
I'm sorry.
If I may, the actual site plan is included in your agenda package, and for the benefit of the adjacent property owners I just shared with, that makes it anywhere it was.
So it got shared with them? So maybe, maybe Mr. Ruddy has solved our problem?
Let's go ahead.
All right. So we have one question of you from Mr. Oats.
Yeah, what's the diameter of your monopole?
A monopole of this height is generally in the order of seven or eight feet in diameter.
Is that continuous, or just at the base and tapered?
No, it's a tapered pole. So the pole diameter tapers down consistent with the loading requirement.
So the top, maybe three, four feet diameter, or?
At the top of the pole could be as small as 30 inches, but 30 inches to 36 inches, somewhere in that neighborhood, tapering down to, as I said, seven or eight feet at the base.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
As part of the waiver, and you have it in the letter you sent, Mr. Goudy, you're required to design the pole that it'll fall within the setback, and you feel confident with the current monopoles that that's not a problem?
Yes, yes. Poles of this nature are designed all the time to meet this type of requirement. It's, the way to think of this is that it's pre-engineered to collapse upon itself. So whereas you might think, well, if I was going to design a pole, where would the highest load be? The highest load would be at the base, but what, what is done when engineering a pole of this nature is, we engineer a breakpoint, a point of collapse up higher on the tower, so that rather than failing, if it ever did receive a catastrophic wind, rather than failing at the base and laying flat out, it would actually fold over on itself. Once it folds over, it has then a reduced wind profile, and the loads go down.
Yes, Mr. Moan.
I just, I have two quick questions. One, it seems to me that part of the, well, if it's an advantage of the waiver, or the proposed waiver and the setback that you're proposing, is that it does kind of take the structure closer, obviously, to Route 7, and a little further away from the established residential neighborhood. So there's, by placing it there, you do have somewhat of an advantage visually. Are you guys using the topography to, to your advantage in that respect?
I would say the short answer to that is no. The reason being that this portion of this property that it's being situated on is all high. There is a stream valley on this property nearby, but that would not be advantageous to the radio design if we put it down into a low area. We, there'd be no point in, we'd need a taller tower if we put it into a lower area.
Gotcha. Well, the, in the second question I have, is the, the gap or the area that you're, you're seeking to fill with this tower? What is the general area that your gap that you all are covering? It may be a situation where we take a look at the propagation map or something to get a feel for that. That would be great.
Different engineer, we'll call him up now.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. To answer your question, sir, we are trying to connect the site we have at the intersection of 7 and 81. So there's one Verizon site over there. So that tower, proposed tower, will connect that site with the site which is on the eastern side, Valley Mill Road. So it's roughly two miles east of this location, so it will connect these two sites.
So, and that's an area that's experiencing service problems at this time?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Let's see here. Now, yeah, I think we will close the public hearing.
I'll, I'm just going to throw out, I don't have a problem with this application, as long as it's Mr. Moan's district, but it is a little frustrating that this is a chance for the school to earn some money from a cell tower site. If they were to do this on several sites, it could probably pay for one or two teachers, so I realize you probably still would have had to raise taxes, but I hate to see the school turn away money like this. And I'd rather see it go on an existing structure than build a new pole out in the middle of the field. After you, Mr. Moan.
Yeah, I would, I would second that. I, I think it's a little, it's too bad. It seems like a missed opportunity, certainly if the opportunity was there and they pursued it. But I also understand that they need to move forward, you know, if they don't get cooperation, they've got to move to Plan B, and, you know, that's what, what we have in front of us. And, you know, I do feel that, you know, the conditions address the, the impacts, and it's a, it's a, it's a needed facility. And I'll, can I do this as one motion, or do I need to do two with the waiver? Can I consolidate the two? Two? Okay.
Appropriate.
Well, I'll start with the waiver, since it seems necessary to approve the CUP as proposed. I'd recommend approval of the setback reduction of 65 feet to allow the proposed monopole tower to be 100 feet from the identified property line.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Klein, yes.
Oats, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Molder, no.
Moan, yes.
And the chair votes yes.
I'll follow that motion with a motion to recommend approval of CUP number 03-16 for Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless.
Second.
Any other discussion? Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Klein, yes.
Oats, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Molder, no.
Moan, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on July the 27th.
Madam Chairman, I'll recuse myself from the next action item.
Thank you, sir. This is another public, our second public hearing, and it's rezoning 04-16 for Snowden Bridge Station, submitted by Gray Wolf Inc. to rezone 11.34 acres from the M1 Light and Industrial District to the B2 Business General District, and 2.629 acres from the M1 Light Industrial District to the B3 Industrial Transition District with proffers. The properties are located on the southeastern side of Martinsburg Pike Route 11, and the southern side of the Snowden Bridge Boulevard in the Stonewall Magisterial District, and are identified by property identification numbers 43C-3-2, 43C-3-3, 43C-3-4, 43C-3-4A, 43A-150, 43A-1-151A, and 43A-151B. Mrs. Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. As you stated, this is a rezoning application that seeks to rezone a total of 13.9 acres from the M1 District to both the B2 and B3 districts with proffers. Now, the properties are located within the sewer water service area and within the limits of the Northeast Frederick Land Use Plan of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. If I can draw your attention to the screen to your left, we have a location map that shows the current zoning of the property. The subject properties are outlined in black. Didn't work. Get my bearings here. We have Martinsburg Pike that runs along the frontage of the property, and we have Snowden Bridge Boulevard in this location here. Now, the Comprehensive Plan identifies these properties with an industrial land use designation, which is consistent with the current zoning of the properties. So in general, the proposed commercial zoning designation is inconsistent with the land use supported by the Comprehensive Plan. However, considering the visibility of the site, its location on Martinsburg Pike, the I-81 interchange, and the amount of commercial land already within the close proximity of, proximity to the site, the requested commercial may be acceptable. Now, on the screen to your left, this is the Northeast Land Use Plan designations, as you can see, all that area is in blue, which is the industrial designation. Just for reference, what they're seeking, you have this area here, which is the area they're seeking to go to the B2 district, and this property down here is the requested Now, with the rezoning application, the applicant has proffered to limit the number of restricted entrances on Martinsburg Pike to two, and one on Snowden Bridge Boulevard. entrances on Martinsburg Pike to two and one on Snowden Bridge Boulevard. And they have also limited the maximum number of vehicle trips on the site to 6,003. Now, the entrance locations are shown on the proffer GDP. They are also noted that they are conceptual in nature and the proffer states that the final design and location of those entrances will need to be approved by VDOT and the county. So this is the generalized development plan on the screen to your left. As I stated, it does show the entrance, proposed restricted entrances both on Route 11 and Snowden Bridge Boulevard, in addition to the full entrance on Snowden Bridge Boulevard. Now, the applicant has also proffered a 10-foot right-of-way dedication for Martinsburg Pike as well as corridor enhancements such as a split rail fence and some increased parking setbacks. There's also a monetary proffer in the amount of 10 cents per building square foot for fire and rescue. So following the public hearing tonight, staff is seeking a recommendation from the planning commission to forward to the board on this requested rezoning application. I would be glad to receive questions that you may have. And Mr. Tim Stowe is here on behalf of the application.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions of Mrs. Perkins? Thank you. Mr. Stowe?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'd be glad to answer any questions. I think Mrs. Perkins did a great job of presenting the project. We'll say the traffic number that she mentioned was based on existing zoning and what could be placed there with existing zoning, which includes restaurants. And we feel like some of the other uses that are allowed in B2 would complement the restaurants that could, that could show up on this property anyway. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have concerning this application.
Any questions? Any? All righty, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to us regarding this rezoning? Anyone at all? Then we will close the public hearing. Any thoughts, any comments?
Madam Chair, just one. I just wonder, it seems like we're doing a good bit of this, changing these zonings. Are we not putting enough thought into it to start with or is it just something that happens when, you know, as time goes by?
Want to have an answer to that?
I think the market has a lot to do with it and what's selling and what's not selling.
And how it's developed already or proposed to be developed?
It's always disappointing to lose any M1 or M2 zonings, but I think in this location at this time, you know, it's appropriate, it's good planning for this location.
Any ones? Anyone? We need to take action on it and this is in the Stonewall Magisterial District.
Yes. Madam Chairman, I move for rezoning of 04-16 of Snowden Bridge Station.
Right. Any other comments? Mr. Moan?
Moan, yes.
Holden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Klein, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
And Unger is yes. And the chair is yes as well. It goes on July the 27th to the Board of Supervisors. All right, our next item is also a public hearing item. It's rezoning 05-16 for CB Ventures LLC submitted by Greenway Engineering to rezone 3.75 acres from the B3 Industrial Transition District to the B2 General Business District and 1.23 acres from the B2 General Business District to the B2 General Business District with proffers. The property is located on the south side of Martinsburg Pike, US Route 11, and the northeast side of Amaco Lane, Route 839, at the southwest quadrant of Interstate 81, Exit 317, in the Stonewall Magisterial District and is identified by property identification number 43-A-48A. Mrs. Perkins.
Again, thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission. As you stated, this is a rezoning request to rezone a total 4.98 acres from the B2 and the B3 districts to the, all B2 with proffers. If I can draw your attention to the screen to your left, we have an aerial location map. We have the subject property outlined in black. Then we have Interstate 81, Route 11, and then Amaco Lane. Kind of mixed up that triangle there. And this is the existing zoning of the site. As you can see, the B3, which is historically the old 84 lumber site, and then the piece in the front, which is the current B2, was the old McDonald's. As you're aware, all those sites have been demolished, so it's currently vacant land. Now, the property is located within the sewer water service area and within the limits of the Northeast Land Use Plan. The Northeast Land Use Plan identifies the property with a commercial land use designation. So therefore, the requested B2 is consistent with the goals of the Comprehensive Plan. Now with this rezoning application, the applicant has offered a number of proffers. First, there are some upgrades to Amaco Lane within the limits of the existing right-of-way to the limits of their southeasternmost entrance. They have provided for interparcial connections into the adjacent Sheets property, which is currently under construction. They'll be designing, constructing a pump station, providing landscaping along Amaco Lane on the adjacent residential lots that are on the other side of Amaco Lane from their site. And they've also proffered a monetary contribution of .05 per building square foot for fire and rescue. Now, some of the impacts that were noted in the staff report that go along with the application, first with the Amaco Lane, VDOT did point out that there's a potential for the site's entrance to be located at the northwestern edge of the property. So therefore, there is potential for minimal Amaco Lane improvements. The sanitation authority requested that the proffer language be expanded to include SCADA system, which would coordinate with other pump stations that will be on the system. And also, staff pointed out possible consideration of keeping some of the existing landscaping that's on the property, the subject property, instead of having to replant across the street on the neighbor's property. Flip through the applicant's slide. So following the public hearing, again, we're seeking a recommendation from the commission to forward to the board on the requested application. I would be glad to receive questions. And Mr. Evan Wyatt is here on behalf of the application.
Thank you. Questions of Mrs. Perkins? I don't see any, thank you. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Evan Wyatt of Greenway Engineering. We're representing CB Ventures with the rezoning application. The property, of course, that we're talking about, as Candace pointed out, there's a portion that's already zoned B2 in the front and this portion has historically been zoned B3. The purpose of the rezoning is because the property owners are desiring to do hotel and restaurant land use. The restaurants are already permissible in the B3 District, however, the hotel land use is not. So that's the basis for the rezoning. The, the issues that staff brought up, I'll actually circle back to the VDOT issue. When we, when we originally did the VDOT or the rezoning package, we had a generalized development plan. We showed entrance and we showed connectivity, even though this is an older aerial, as you know, the Sheets is redeveloping here and there's a connecting point here. VDOT had requested that we eliminate entrance locations on Amaco Lane. Once again, VDOT seems to be more in a mindset of looking at the locations when you get more to a plan of development at the rezoning stage. So what we ended up doing, our, our company did the site plan for Sheets. And when we did that, what VDOT was looking for was milling and overlaying of Amaco Lane back to the limits of their property. So what we agreed to do was to continue that along Amaco Lane to our southeasternmost entrance. We're anticipating an entrance generally in two locations on the property. Of course, Amaco Lane stubs out before you get to the interstate. So, so that's the VDOT matter. As far as the sanitation authority, what was asked of the applicant was to ensure that the pump station and infrastructure that was being designed was not only appropriate for the buildout of this property, but also the land uses on Amaco Lane. And so we, we actually proceeded with the design elements for the pump station and the, and the collection system that's been submitted to both VDOT and the sanitation authority. We've received back comments. We're working off a couple minor issues, but that should be approvable. So the, the purpose for the oversizing of the pump station, very simply, is right now the land uses in this area do not have access to sewer that's served by the sanitation authority. The Sheets actually is served by the City of Winchester and they're grandfathered because they've currently been tied into that system. So the sanitation authority wanted to utilize this project kind of as the impetus to get sewer that was adequate to account for future development of the properties on Amaco Lane. Regarding the comment on the SCADA system, if you review the proffers, you'll see not only are we proffering to, you know, to upgrade, if you will, the pump station, but to meet the standards and specifications of FCSA, which would be required anyway. So we don't really feel there's a need to do that as a proffer condition. To be perfectly honest with you, I get worried about proffering specific mechanical standards because if those change over time to something else the sanitation authority wants, we're out of conformity with, with the proffer statement. So I think it's safer just to reference standards and specifications because that's what we're going to have to do anyway. Regarding the landscaping comment, what I want to do is give you information about our neighborhood meeting that we had. And the neighborhood meeting was well-attended. The, the property owners that have owner-occupied units on Amaco Lane, every one of those property owners attended. I was also contacted by a property owner who rents one of the properties who was not able to attend the meeting. And we spoke. The property owners were all in favor of the rezoning. They were very comfortable that the developer was local. They saw this as an opportunity, once these properties developed, to make their properties more marketable in the future because they're already zoned B2. And they certainly appreciated the fact that there was going to be sewer option for them with these properties as well. So one of the things we talked about to the property owners was the, the option of doing landscaping because even though their properties are zoned B2 today, they currently are existing residential land use and we wanted to be respectful of that. So what we did was we talked to them and we felt that there would be a better benefit to them with landscaping by doing something on their properties if they chose to do so. Everyone we talked to was amenable to that concept. They felt it would be a better solution and they recognized that the existing vegetation along Amaco Lane was fairly mature. Some of it would probably be taken when the property developed and what was not impacted might die later anyway. So they were more inclined to offer us the landscape easements so we could do the plantings on their properties. So hopefully, I've spoken to the three issues that staff raised, but if there's other questions of the commission, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Or Mr. Wyatt?
Got it.
Mr. Thomas, is it you?
Yeah, the landscape easements on the neighbor's properties there, will the hotel also maintain those, that landscaping and replace it if it dies?
The way that we would do this, Roger, is that it would come with the one-year guarantee for the plant materials. After that year came and went, the maintenance of the landscaping would be up to each individual property owner that requested to have the plantings done. We did a similar approach a long time ago with the Hartwood Project down near Stevens City and that worked out well. The trees that were planted survived and, you know, so we're, we're looking at that model to do here as well.
Those property owners understood that? Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, sir. Anything else? Yes, sir.
The proffers on fire and rescue is not consistent with the others I've seen come down the Pike in the last, from five cents to 10 cents is what I'm talking about.
The, historically, what we have been offering is the five cent. Of course, with this being an economic development project, it is a cash positive to the county. This provides assistance to fire and rescue specifically. But we've, we've kind of gone back and forth with this question over time and I think there's been a reluctance to try to establish a set fee for, for offering that.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Oates?
Yeah, I checked with Eric Lawrence out of sanitation authority earlier about the proffers as presented tonight, and he is still not comfortable with the way they're written. Mainly because the SCADA system that he requested is something that's above and beyond the standards and specifications as it's worded in your proffers. The pump station is going onto a forced main that's already at capacity. So in order for your force, or pump station to work, it needs to be linked into the other pump stations in the area so they're not all coming on at the same time.
We, we certainly understand the concept of the SCADA system and the proffers may not call out that specifically, but I wish he would have advised you that the design we submitted does provide that technology.
I didn't know you had submitted a design for the pump station for review at this point.
Yes.
Is the SCADA on it? Okay. The second thing was VDOT's comment about the Amaco Lane was across your entire frontage, but you're only going to the entrances. Why not all across the entire frontage of your property?
To be perfectly honest with you, where the limits of the entrances are is where the traffic impacts are going to be. If Amaco Lane was a road that continued somewhere, that might be a different discussion. But there's really no compelling reason to, to invest money in running curb and gutter and doing milling and overlaying on a road that ends in a dead end past where we're going to be accessing.
But down towards the end of Amaco Lane, that's a pretty rough road and needing improvement. There's potholes, it's a lot of uneven pavement. I could see where VDOT's comments justified in trying to get that road up to a more manageable condition. That's pretty, pretty poor right now, especially down around the cul-de-sac.
Mr. Unger?
Two things. How many houses are affected down through there?
I'm sorry, in what regard?
On Amaco Lane, how many houses are you doing shrubbery and stuff on down through there?
We've offered the opportunity for every property that you see that has a residence located on it.
And the road that's come, the Amaco Lane, that is a state road?
That's correct.
Well, so it's a VDOT road anyway. Well, okay.
Just, just for the record, I want to make sure that it's, a nod of the head can't be recorded too well in the minutes, but he did commit that the SCADA system was in the current design that was sent
That's correct.
To the sanitation authority. Thank you.
Correct.
Any other comments? I have one, Mr. Evans, and that is, what entry are they going to use to come into that plot? Are they going to come through the Sheets property or are they going to come down?
The Sheets property is being developed on these two parcels. They are using this access off of Amaco Lane to access their property. We would not have the ability to come off of this to get into the property.
Okay.
VDOT wants to look at spacing between here and our entrances that would be on here to serve the two properties.
Got it. Thank you. All righty. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address us regarding this rezoning? Anyone? Well, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. This is a, again, another Stonewall Magisterial District project. Any comments? Any further comments?
Chair.
Sir.
I'd like to see this, this put on the table for 60 days. Property of CB Ventures 05-16.
Okay. Mr. Moan?
Could I ask for some clarification of the, what, what you're hoping to, just hoping to get, achieve over the course of the tabling, I guess is my.
Any questions? I, I think. That hasn't been completely answered.
Yes, sir.
I'll second, I'll second that.
I'll second it, so we can have the discussion.
Well, technically speaking, we can't have a discussion.
If we second it, yeah.
You can't discuss the tabling after a second.
Right. Don't second. Okay.
Okay. Well, good. Okay.
We didn't second it.
No, it's not seconded?
No.
Okay, good.
It's not seconded?
Well, generally, when you table something, it's, you can go on what you want.
We can discuss it while it's not seconded, right?
Right.
Like, further studying of the roads and even the fire and rescue. I still have a problem with the five cents. What's five more cents for him?
Well, I agree with the road, because I've never been at a hotel where people don't miss the entrance, and if there is a cul-de-sac there, there's going to be hotel traffic going down to the cul-de-sac and turning around. There's going to be overflow parking, where people are going to be parking out in the street. But, and I do think probably the fire and rescue proffer's a little on the light side, but I'm not sure we have a precedent, or I guess previously, we could say the previous.
Well, yeah, it's a proffer, so it has to be voluntary, and we can't name a price.
Hotels do cause a lot of activity with fire and rescue.
I'll go along with it on, I guess, thinking about the road, but I guess also just to verify the sanitation authority's fine with it, since this evening, they told me that they weren't, to see if they're fine with where that's at, at this point. So I guess the tabling was for
60 days.
60 days for the road, and...
To make sure
Okay, folks.
Madam Chair, could I just ask a question about, what do you want them to do to the road? What's going to change when we get back in 60 days? It's, I don't know what you're expecting.
The issue is what we're doing at this point, and I'm going to look over to Mike. It's my understanding that, first of all, we don't need to second a tabling suggestion, and we are not to discuss it until we vote, and so... Okay?
So you're looking at me to start the vote on the tabling? Is that why you keep looking at me?
Well, you might as well.
All right. Moan, no.
Mauden, no.
Thomas, yes.
Oats, yes.
Klein, yes.
Manuel, no.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, no.
Unger, no.
And the Chair votes no. May I have the tally of the votes, please?
Madam Chairman, six noes, three yes, so the motion failed to second.
Motion fails. Thank you very much. All right. We have a, need to do something else.
Madam Chairman, well, I don't think the application needs to receive a negative from the Planning Commission. I guess the person I would prefer for a tabling, just to answer a couple of questions, but I would make a motion to approve, however, with the understanding that V, or, excuse me, sanitation authority is satisfied prior to the Board's hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any other discussion?
Is that the only thing we're dealing with now, sanitation?
That's the main one for me, since that line's already over capacity, or at capacity.
Any other comments? All righty, Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes. Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Klein, yes.
Oats, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Mauden, yes.
Moan, yes.
And the Chair votes yes. This also will go to the Board on July the 27th. Our next item is an action item. It's rezoning 06-16 Semplis' property, submitted by Panone to revise proffers associated with rezoning 02-04. This revision relates to the onsite development sections of the proffers for the M1 Light Industrial District zone portion of the site. The applicant is requesting to revise the proffers to allow the use of tilt-up concrete walls and to remove proffers that have been completed. The property is located adjacent to Martinsburg Pike, Route 11, approximately 200 feet north of the intersection of Woodbine Road, Route 669, and Martinsburg Pike in Stonewall Magisterial District, and is identified by property identification number 34-A-4. Mrs. Perkins?
Madam Chair, I'll need to recuse myself.
Again, thank you. As you stated, this is a proffer amendment to revise the proffers from a 2004 rezoning to allow the use of tilt-up concrete walls within an M1 portion of the property. Now, the site is located along Martinsburg Pike, about 250 feet east, excuse me, north of the intersection of Woodbine Road and Martinsburg Pike. If you, on the screen to your left, we have an outline of the property. This shows the current zoning. The subject piece is the section in blue, outlined in black, that's the M1 piece. Now, the site was originally rezoned back in 2004 to both the M1 and the B2 districts. Those proffers limited the facade materials to concrete, masonry brick, architectural block, drivet, or other simulated stucco, real, or simulated water glass. So with the proffer amendment, they're requesting the addition of the tilt-up concrete walls. Now, along with that addition, they are updating the proffers to remove some of the improvements that were previously completed or only applied to the B2 portions of the property. I would note that the proffers from the 2004 will still apply to the B2 section of the site. And also, the same GDP that was proffered with the 2004 still runs with this new rezoning. So tonight, following the public meeting, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Commission to forward to the Board. There's no public hearing required for this proffer amendment, and I would be glad to answer any questions. The property owner is here, should you have any questions.
Thank you. Questions of Mrs. Perkins?
Let me all ask it.
Hello?
So what's a tilt-up wall?
Tilt-up wall.
Tilt-up. It's for larger warehousing and just larger buildings. It's a precast wall that they set up in place.
Tilt-up.
Tilt-up.
Yes, Mr. Thomas?
Was this revised proffer statement reviewed by counsel?
No, since it's just a very minor proffer amendment, they updated the previous proffer. The county attorney is currently on vacation, but we'll definitely have him look at it.
Mr. Thomas, if I may, the county attorney was involved with the discussions on this particular thing prior to him leaving for vacation, and so we're very comfortable with the approach that was taken here, and while he did not review the actual proffer statement when it came on in, our discussions prior to that gave us the comfort level that we were okay with the approach taken.
Okay, and all of the statements where the answer was proffer completed and/or related to another proffer, that has been verified, and counsel was fine with that?
We verified that as a staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Semplis?
George Semplis. I'm just here to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Semplis? Don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, this is an action item for us, and we are to vote on the change concerning the tilt-up.
I don't see a problem with this. The staff verified that what they said completed was completed, and I'm a little surprised that we ended up with a architectural proffer like this, that we have to go back in and change it now for tilt-up walls. I would have thought that we would have never done that. We should never do that.
Okay.
Actually, most developments call for masonry construction, and tilt-up is included in that, so it would have been approved already. So I would certainly support approval tonight.
Madam Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I move for approval of the rezoning application 06-16. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second.
All righty, Mr. Moan?
Moan, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Oats, yes.
Klein, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Unger, yes.
And the Chair votes yes. This goes to the Board on July 22nd. Thank you all very much. I think we're at the end of our agenda, and I think my information is that we do meet again.
I do not believe we have anything on the anticipated coming up to the next agenda.
I can't hear you, Mike.
I do not believe there is anything anticipated to be coming in front of the Planning Commission at their next meeting.
So we cancel our next meeting?
Cancel the meeting on the 6th of July?
Second?
Second.
Oh, third. Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All righty. Anything else for the good of the cause?
Move for German.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Beach, anytime, sir. I need a second for a table.